Good evening, and we welcome you to the City Board of Alderman for the month of February. At this time, will you please stand to your feet? And we invite to this desk Reverend Mary Jo Taylor, who will lead us in our invocation. She serves as the pastor of Pleasant Ridge Assembly of God Church here at 2880 Fairview Road.
Let us pray together. Lord Jesus, we're so thankful that we live in a free country where we can worship and work together. And I just pray tonight, Lord, as these business situations come to light, Lord, that you would grant wisdom and knowledge, and that you would create unity even more so than ever. Lord, that you would instruct these that are leaders. We pray for them faithfully, and we pray tonight that decisions will be made that will be in your best interest and the best entry of interest of our county. And we worship and praise you tonight. Amen.
Will you please remain standing while I pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. At this time, we have a roll call by the city council.
Mayor, I left some documents.
Thank you.
Bell?
Here.
Lindsey?
Here.
Askew?
Here.
Simmons?
Here.
Galbert?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Argud?
Here.
Smith? Smith is not here. And you're here too.
I am here.
I'm sorry, I got distracted by the breeze.
Yes, ma'am, I do apologize. I was just waiting to hear. All right, at this time, we're going to ask if there is a motion to approve the minutes.
So move second.
It's been moved and prompted second. I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor, is the vote signed by?
Aye.
Those opposed, is the vote down in May? Eyes have it. And we will entertain now a motion of acceptance of our financial report. As I move? It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
And I see that Mr. Green isn't...
He's not here to see me.
He's not here.
No, sir.
I'll just raise two points that I looked at and looking through this just one month. Anyway. Primarily, one thing that came to mind, and actually it's on the airport fund page, page eighteen out of twenty-five on the report. We had an expenditure there, a large sixty thousand dollars for an FFA grant that was not in the budget line. And I told the airport commissioner, I said, you know, I just, you got a deal like that, it looks like that we ought to have to vote to amend the budget before you write a check for something of that magnitude. And I don't know what the procedure is. I was hoping Jim's gonna be here and he could answer it. I mean, you know, if it wasn't an emergency deal. I know he gave you an explanation of what's involved with the grant, that they're away from the air FFA or something like that. But for you, it looks like, you know, it just looks like it's a thing that we shouldn't, shouldn't practice.
Yes, ma'am.
The drawdown system with the grants, FAA changed. And so that's something we're working on with Michael Baker. Normally, we balance it out before we pay a contractor. So that's what you're seeing right now. The money's coming back now.
Well, I'm...
Jim, I know what you're saying. Jim has it. They have it lined up for the next meeting to make sure that it's all issues made.
Okay. So other expenditures that were gonna be, something came up, we would get a chance to amend the budget for, you know, a five hundred dollar bill might come up. Our fuel purchases and utility bills may run over at some point by the end of the year. But I wouldn't expect in January to become up to the sixty thousand dollar expense that the one accounted for. So anyway, I was gonna ask.
I'm sorry, Ellie, what page was that on?
Eighteen out of twenty-five is what's on the bottom of that. Anyway, I just got jumped out at and I thought, wow, that's a real old budget item.
It's five nine four eight zero?
Four eight zero.
Five nine four eight zero.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, yes.
So Lincoln, are you satisfied with?
Yeah, I think it's, it's all gonna be legit. But I just feel like if we're gonna be in charge of the budget, you shouldn't be writing checks for sixty thousand dollars that wasn't in the budget.
Yes, ma'am. Any more discussion? Those in favor, is the vote signed by?
Aye.
Those opposed, is the vote down in May? Eyes have it again. We're gonna prepare now for our time of audience participation. Some of you who have signed in, we have the list here. And if you wait to be recognized before approaching the podium, you state your name and your address for the record. And please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Before we begin, let me just say that the county, Chief Woody or myself can speak on anything regarding the events that took place at Camden Fairview High School yesterday or its ongoing investigation. No comments or question regarding these events will be recognized. It appears to be a personnel matter, and we requested time to gather facts and to make appropriate determinations. While I cannot prohibit your speech, none of us should respond. As you do have a right to address some of your questions, we should not at this time respond to them. First, we have tonight Ms. Rachael Williams.
Rachael Williams, two twelve Parker Avenue. Yeah, I knew you missed it. I want tonight to thank the aldermen that I have seen at more of the community events around here. I saw several of you in participation in support of the Martin Luther King Parade. I've seen you at Pathways to Prosperity and other community meetings. And we as citizens appreciate your participation in these events. I have a question after last month's council meeting. Last month, you guys were appointing people to different committees and boards, things like that. Questions came up about applicants and whatnot. Why are these applicants not required to be at city council during this process so that if those questions come up, they can answer them? And to me, that seems like common sense. If you want to be on a board or a committee, then you should be here to answer the questions that come up in the process. That's my only question, and can anybody answer it?
I will be the one who would have to respond. Say one more time what the actual, give me the question.
Okay, when these people come up for appointment to boards or commissions, why are they not required to be at that council meeting so that if questions come up with their appointment, they can answer those questions at that time?
I think that while that would be great, but then I don't think you can acquire that.
It's kind of like a job interview. So if they want the job, then I would think they would show up. Just my opinion. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Ms. Nervada Danny, please.
She's asking to delete her name.
Oh, I apologize. Ms. Reese Broadnax.
Good evening. I'm Reese Broadnax, four two four Sharp Avenue in Camden. I have a couple of things I'd like to just bring to the attention of the council. I did speak with my alderman, but I do wanna go on record. I have some concerns concerning Sharp Avenue between Marl and Washington. I'm sure my alderman has already brought that to the attention of the police department. But I would like something, some attention brought to that. I almost was hit standing in my yard by somebody who was flying, actually on the wrong side of the road going down the street. The speeds are sometimes forty to fifty miles an hour probably, way faster than needs to be on that little small street. So I would like to ask that some attention be brought to that. Please, I wanna go on record saying that. Second thing, I do hear what you just said as far as there being no responses. My inbox, my phone, everything has been blowing up with people from out of town who love this community, people who know about our community. They are concerned about the events that transpired on yesterday. So I do wanna go on record again just saying I am a concerned citizen. I'm hoping for a expeditious investigation, a thorough investigation, and some answers as soon as possible. Would like it to be thorough for us, but we do want some answers for our community. And for people who are looking at Camden, because we want Camden to have a great name. I do. And we're trying to do so many things on behalf of the improvement of our city. So as quickly as possible, as quickly as you can get us some answers that would be appropriate. Even if you don't get a solution quickly, if you can keep us updated, people updated, so that you do know in a positive manner. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm gonna make a brief report tonight as we do have two reports coming. The city has received the Arkansas Legislative Joint Auditing Committee report. Each of you should have received a copy from the state for your review. If you did not, please let us know so that a copy may be provided to you. There were two reportable comments reflecting on the fiscal year 2018. Number one, the governing body did not review the prior report and accompanying reports and recommendations at the first regularly scheduled meeting following the receipt of the report as required by Arkansas Code annotated at ten four four eighteen. Number two, a construction contract change order amendment was not approved by the city's governing body in noncompliance with Arkansas Code annotated fourteen fifty-eight three oh five and Camden Ordinance number eight ninety-six, which was May fourteen nineteen ninety-six. We filed our response with the auditor, and it reads as follows. This year, the report will be provided and distributed to all the governing body officials within the noted timeframe required by Arkansas Code ten four four eighteen. And our response number two is that all future city construction contract change order agreements will be appropriately introduced and approved by the governing body in compliance with Arkansas Code fourteen five eight three zero eight and Camden Ordinance eight ninety-six. Also, the clerk received a strong suggestion that departments complete a fixed asset form when a purchase is made. The asset is transferred to a different department and when the asset is retired, whether by auction or destruction. Each of you have a copy of the form, and we need your vote of approval on this and the solution to numbers one and two previously mentioned. This will be recorded in the minute so that we don't receive another write-up for not discussing the audit during our council meeting. A motion. Move? Seconded. I'm ready for discussion.
What's a motion?
That we accept these two suggestions. We agree. We need a vote of approval on this and the solutions to numbers one and two. These were our solutions to the problems that we decided on. So this going to be, is this just a model that we're gonna have to fill out? It's never enough to do tonight, right?
No, I didn't model life. We're not doing...
This is the solution reform. Where's the solution?
So basically, this is a form that, for instance, the police department, when they buy a car...
Anybody that buys a large item would fill out that information and send it.
And then fill it out another one again, I guess, when they...
They could keep a copy and just keep adding to that. And that's hopefully the way it will work. This is a new thing.
Do they put a dollar amount on that? I mean, if you bought a hundred dollar add-on sheet...
And over twenty-five hundred dollars, I have to keep up with.
So there is a dollar.
Yeah.
Will this one discuss?
Yes, ma'am.
Will this go retroactive to everything we already own?
Only if you wanted to. But that's gonna be a lot more work.
If I remember, this may have come up under Jerry Cross, that we had an audit where they started pushing and promoting that. And I don't know how much of it got done, but I'm trying to think. There's been a lot of work done trying to...
They have checked on it every year that I've been here. And every year, I always have at least one thing that I didn't catch yet. So they said, a lot of people are using this form. We should just use this form too. So I was like, okay.
It started out, seems like they were wanting us to do sidewalks and curbs. I mean, that's insane.
Um, it's listed under improvements. Yeah.
Well, I mean, just urban sidewalks.
Yeah.
Crazy.
So basically?
So basically, we just needed a paper trail.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
All right, any more discussion? Those in favor, is the vote signed by?
Aye.
Those opposed, is the vote down in May? Eyes have it again. Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to call for the fire department to give their annual report. We're thankful to have serving Ron Nash as our interim fire chief.
Evening.
Evening.
The first part is just table of contents and lays out the graph. I need the tables to place the rest. You go ahead, turn to five as we all start talking from there. This is a two thousand nineteen year in report for the Camden Fire Department. You can stop me, just holler, I'll stop and explain whatever is going on, or you can wait till the end, and I'll be glad to answer any questions I can answer for you. I appreciate the opportunity to report to the council on the state Camden Fire Department. Last year brought out a lot of changes to the department. Regardless of the changes within the department, I'd like to assure the citizens and the council that we're moving in a positive direction. Fire department tended to serve the needs of the city of Camden. I'd like to start by highlighting some of the changes and then go into each area. The department provided statistical information that I believe is deemed relevant to each area. In two thousand nineteen, the fire department responded to an incident involving a truck fire and explosion resulting in the death of one civilian and the injury of two firefighters. A command vehicle and engine three were also damaged in the same incident. We also experienced another firefighter injury from a fall from a ladder on a structure fire. These were the only fire-related casualties for two thousand nineteen. Last year, the department continued to struggle with staffing issues. We start off the year short one firefighter and ended the year with four vacancies. New auto expiration equipment was purchased in two thousand nineteen, followed up with department-wide training. It's been placed in service and has greatly improved our ability to perform on the scene of an accident. The council approved the purchase of a new rescue truck. Contract was signed for the purchase, and the arrival of the new truck was expected the first part of two thousand twenty-one. The department inspected and serviced six hundred and seven fire hydrants last year. Job descriptions for each position within the fire department were evaluated and put into place. The council amended the ordinance to govern outside fire contracts, helping clear up any areas of confusion in the department's response that had existed. The department has implemented new programs in the area of inspections and division of labor, and both are expected to be beneficial to the department. The department continues to maintain an ISO two rating. You'll see on page six, as we start the graphs here, total requests for service. In two thousand nineteen, the Camden Fire Department answered a thousand seventy-two national fire incident reporting system request for service. This represents an increase of two point three percent from the previous year of two thousand eighteen. This number only represents the emperor's eligible request. The department answered an additional fourteen hundred twenty-three requests for service that did not meet the criteria for emperor. The addition of this data raises our total request for service to two thousand four hundred ninety-five for the year two thousand nineteen. And that's the number represented in the graph. Excuse me. The four thousand seventy-two represented the emperor, I'm sorry. The addition of this data raises our total request for service to twenty-four hundred ninety-five for the year two thousand nineteen. This is down from twenty-eight hundred sixty-nine in total request for service in two thousand eighteen. This represents a thirteen percent decrease in call volume overall for the year two thousand nineteen. And fire responses out of these calls. In two thousand nineteen, the Camden Fire Department responded to eighty-three fire calls. Of these eighty-three fire calls, twenty-four were structured fires. The numbers of fire calls for two thousand nineteen are up fifteen percent from two thousand eighteen. Our goal is, and always has been, the reduction in fire losses. Our increase in fire costs for two thousand nineteen in comparison to two thousand eighteen does not reflect the overall downward trend for the last six years. Even though we were up a little higher, I think if you look at the graph, overall for the past six years, we've been declining. So hopefully, our public education, inspection, enforcement is succeeding a little bit.
Yes, I have a question out of the structure bars. How many of those were worked? I'm gonna call it empty houses, abandoned houses.
Abandoned house? I know exactly. Figure on that. I've got some more breakdowns coming out of data beyond that. But I mean, some of them are gonna be, that's gonna include cooking fires, chimney fires, actual building fires. We're looking, well, that is twenty-four. Twenty-four are actual building fires. I'm sorry, there's three cooking fires, one chimney fire, and I'm going down the list. Fires to fighters, about fifteen different areas in here. But out of those, twenty-four are more structured fires. But I went down to four though, probably maybe somewhere in there. The biggest thing, last time we did a study on it, was here a few years ago, I think it was two thousand fourteen or fifteen. I think you'll find that, I think at the time, it was twenty-seven percent of all structured fires inside the city of Camden have an origin of cooking fires. On page eight there, property loss. In two thousand nineteen, we experienced thirty-six requests for service that resulted in property loss. This number's down from the sixty-four property loss calls experienced in two thousand eighteen. The value of these losses was established through a variety of sources, including ACT Data Scout, the National Automotive Dealers Association, and Kelly Glue Book. These forty-six responses represent a total of one billion seven hundred eighty thousand nine hundred sixty-five dollars in value with an estimated loss of seven hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred dollars. This represents a property savings to citizens of Camden, nine hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Down below, you'll see a table from two thousand nine to two thousand nineteen. And just below that, you'll see an explanation on two thousand eleven, the spike in that right there was with two commercial fires during that year. Response time. Average response time is determined by dividing the total request time by the total number of requests for service. Since two thousand nineteen, it's been designed by Camden Fire Department to reduce our response time to at or below three minutes. In two thousand nineteen, the Camden Fire Department provided an average response time of two point two four minutes. The average response time for two thousand nineteen was slightly lower than the average response time for two thousand eighteen. Public education and inspection. Public education and fire inspections have always been an important part of our service that we provide for the community. It always, excuse me, allows us an opportunity to educate the public and hopefully reduce fire losses, injuries, and even deaths. Our data for fires and fire losses are indications that our efforts are being invested well. In two thousand nineteen, we have seen a considerable increase in public attendance as compared to previous years. In two thousand nineteen, we experienced a fifty-two percent increase from two thousand eighteen in public education attendance. The public attendance data from table five does not include the individuals we interact with during inspections or the public that is reached from our efforts through social media. In two thousand nineteen, we provided fire education classes to two thousand three hundred and thirty individuals. This is an increase of eight hundred and one individuals in two thousand nineteen compared to two thousand eighteen. And on the next page, it's dealing with inspections. The Camden Fire Department conducted four hundred thirty-four inspections in two thousand nineteen, an increase compared to two thousand nineteen, excuse me, an increase compared to two hundred nineteen inspections in two thousand eighteen. Implementation of the department's new inspection program should sustain the increase made in two thousand nineteen on into the year two thousand twenty.
Uh, excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Your inspections, what exactly do they cover? What do you do during inspections?
Commercial inspections, as far as businesses, churches, schools. It's pretty well ordered now, Steve. And a lot of them are organized, especially on new businesses through public enforcement. We try to schedule everything we can. When they also have to inspect it, we do it at the same time. Makes it easier on the business owner. Training. Training is a large part of our daily activities. We currently have four openings within the department. They spent all of two thousand nineteen operating short staffs. We did observe a decrease in our training hours in two thousand nineteen, and this is partially due to being short-staffed. A lot of this has to do with the fact that guys are not able to go out to the academy and leave, take schools beyond right at the fire department. So what we're getting, we're having to do pretty well for most of our, get right in-house. We continue to concentrate on preparing our officers and firefighters for the next step in their careers and provide classes on such topics. Building inspections, company officer and chief officer. Right now, we have two assistant chiefs, chief officer class at Jacksonville, which will be a four-week class if we spread out over four months. We also continue to provide emergency medical technician training. In two thousand nineteen, the fire department logged twenty-seven hundred thirty-six certified training hours through the Arkansas Fire Academy as well as other sources. Medical responses. The Camden Fire Department continues to provide emergency medical services within the scope of our training. The department currently has seven EMTs and seventeen EMRs on the department. The department responded to fifty-five medical assist calls. Between the years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, there appears to be a sixty-five percent decrease in the department's medical responses. This decrease is largely the result of a coding change in our data system. We responded to an additional forty-eight invalid assist calls, which are no longer included in our medical response data. Before, that forty-eight calls would have been over to the other. Now with Firehouse Place set up, it's off into service calls, and I don't pull it out and add it with that. It's in service call, I'm just letting say service calls and medical assist calls. Anything we do medically is stayed in a separate division or whatever within the program. They are included in the total number of service calls, talking about the forty-eight invalid assist calls in the data. The department personnel also provide medical assistance on all rescue and expiration calls, and that data is also not reflected in these totals. The fire department organization, the Camden Fire Department is organized into three shift approach tuning systems. Each shift is comprised of nine firefighters. They're divided between three stations based on emergency response requirements. Each shift reports for duty at oh seven hundred hours and works a twenty-four-hour day, beginning at oh seven hundred hours the following morning. During each day, the shift works to fulfill basic duties based on the day of the week. In addition to the daily duties, each shift is required to perform public education, fire hydrant maintenance, commercial inspection, and maintain a constant state of readiness. In two thousand nineteen, the fire department saw the retirement of fire chief Rob Medford, assistant chief Richard Van Ash, and assistant chief Tim Sharp, as well as the resident nation of two other fellow firefighters. Promotions were made exhausting the civil service certification list to fill the vacancies. Currently, the department is short a full-time fire chief, a lieutenant, and two firefighters. We do have a former firefighter scheduled to return to work at the department this week, which will be next, excuse me, this month, starting next week. The last sheet I have here is basically a quick rundown in comparison on our budget, the two thousand nineteen actuals that we actually spent last year, and then this is appropriated money for twenty twenty right in here. It shows a pretty good increase here of four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, four hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred thirty-seven dollars. But about two hundred fifty-four of that was budgeted for the new rescue truck. After the discount, it'd be about three forty-six. And then, of course, there's some increases you'll see in personal services from the forty percent raise we had in there. We'll take care of part of that. If the last sheet is blank, issue me some scratch paper. If there's anything I can answer, any questions, come later. I'll be glad to provide them.
Thank you for your report. And your stats are continuing to improve, a wonderful job. And if you will, Chief Nash, to show my gratitude, I'd really like for you to invite him in to meet us on Monday morning at nine AM. We're gonna have a breakfast there at First United Methodist. We're gonna have a breakfast there at First United Methodist Church for first responders. We appreciate you because while many of us are running from danger, we have people who have to run to danger on our behalf. And every day, those spouses are probably praying and hoping that nothing happens, but when it does happen, we have to keep them lifted up and hope for the best and just pray with them in those times. Thank you for what you do, and thank you for that report. At this time, we call from the police department for our annual report chief Lloyd Wood.
Mayor Lot, thank you, city council persons. Thank you for your, uh, your time for me to come to the podium. Present to you the two thousand and nineteen crime analysis report for the city of Camden and the police department. The table of contents is first, and our organizational chart from two thousand and nineteen. Then I'll go ahead and get right into our, our crime statistics. And as always, we base seven different categories of offensive. Homicide, robbery, rape, burglary, assault, theft, and auto thefts, which is all reported through the FBI, through our national incident-based reporting system, or what we call NIBR. That's how they keep up with every city and municipal and the state so they have their numbers, and that's what we report through. And these categories are further divided into crimes against persons or crimes against property. So, uh, on our homicides this year for two thousand and nineteen, we do have, we did have two homicides. It was a terrible domestic violence situation. We are currently seeking the suspect for rewording in this case. It's a nationwide search, but we have asked for, the FBI and the US Marshal Service are attempting to help us locate him. In two thousand nineteen, we had ten robberies, which is up six from two thousand and eighteen. And eight out of those ten cases have been cleared and solved. And out of those six robberies, a firearm was used in three of them, which about fifty percent of them. There were two reported rape cases in two thousand nineteen, and that number is exactly the same as it was in two thousand eighteen. Both rape cases in two thousand nineteen were cleared and solved. Assaults, the number of assaults in two thousand nineteen did decrease by forty-six percent, with twenty-eight being reported compared to sixty year before. Burglaries, there's two different categories of burglary. One is commercial. We had twenty-seven commercial burglaries reported in two thousand nineteen, which is a one percent decrease that were reported in two thousand eighteen, there were twenty-eight. Residential burglaries, there were forty-three residential burglaries in nineteen, and that is a forty-two percent decrease from seventy-eight reported in two thousand and eighteen. Thefts, which has always been one of our biggest issues in Camden, it has decreased this year in two thousand and nineteen by twenty-five percent. We only had a hundred and twenty-nine reported compared to the hundred and seventy-two reported in two thousand and eighteen. Automobile thefts, uh, we had nine in two thousand nineteen, which is a lot, about half of what we had in two thousand and eighteen, because there were eighteen. We did have a, a huge, um, decrease because of what we've been telling people about lock your car and, and take your keys out. Out of the, out of the nine we had last year, the same thing, there was no glass broken. It was a fact that the keys were left in the ignition of the car simply to go on. So we're, we're still pleading with this and taking these out of the car. But out of those nine, we have recovered eight. The crime status as far as calls for service. In two thousand and nineteen, we did have a two percent increase in calls for service. We had fourteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-one calls for service. That's been on the decline, inclined for the past eight, uh, four years. Four years ago, in two thousand and sixteen, we only had eight thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. So we've had a sixty-six percent increase in calls in the last four years. Our traffic accidents decreased by seven percent. They went from three hundred and twelve in two thousand and nineteen, and in two thousand and eighteen, there were three hundred and thirty-six of them. There were eleven hundred and thirty traffic citations issued, that is down from the previous year where we issued eighteen hundred and eighty-four. Physical arrests were up in two thousand and nineteen. We arrested one thousand one hundred and thirty-seven compared to one thousand and seventy-three in two thousand and eighteen. There were eight hundred and forty-three warrants served compared to the seven hundred and eighty-seventh in two thousand and eighteen. We did collect nine thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars in warrant fees. And escorts has also declined again, uh, to three hundred and three thousand three hundred and eleven. The next page is our domestic violence, it's probably one of our key problems right now in, in the city of Camden. Now, all of our other crimes seem to be have decreased except for domestic violence. It has increased again, there's two hundred and forty-two cases of domestic violence in Camden. It's twenty-seven percent higher than it was, was last, the year before. Out of those two hundred and forty-two cases, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and thirteen people were arrested. A hundred and thirty-six faced misdemeanor charges, and fifty-one of them were felonies. Included in our domestic violence advocacy group, we also track and monitor all sex offenders that live inside the city limits of Camden. In two thousand and nineteen, we do have forty-four registered sex offenders in Camden. We break those down into four different levels. One is the lowest, we have eight. Two, we have twenty. Level threes, we have eleven, and the highest, which is the, the four, we have three of those living inside the city limits of Camden. The next page is our animal control stats, and they are pretty close to the same as they were. There were nineteen hundred sixty-eight complaints, and that's up. Two hundred and eighty-one reports. They can find three hundred and seventy-eight animals, wrote eighty-eight citations, and twenty-four warnings. We are still having an issue with, with stray dogs in the city of Camden. I'm gonna present that, if the next city council may be a solution that we can, we can move forward to try to eliminate that problem. As far as our training, it's the same as it typically is every year. We're mandated by state law that every police officer has to attend sixteen hours of in-service training. We go above and beyond that with our active shooter training, which is the number one thing that we do. We also offer that service to the citizens of the city, not just in-house. We do our firearms and our racial profiling, crimes against women, um, anything that the officer referred need of that we provide the training for. Our public relations did a tremendous job this year in trying to have an outreach to our community. A couple of things that we normally do, which is our citizens' police academy, we still conduct that, we have two of those a year. This year, we did the Easter egg hunt, put out two hundred eggs and delivered baskets to nursing homes. We, we've been hosting blood drives at the police department, the Special Olympics. This year, we did host our first annual trick-or-treat on the trace, and that was a huge success in my opinion. We had a huge turnout, and I think the citizens really appreciated it. And of course, during Christmas, we do the stuff for cruiser, and we try to help as many. This year, we delivered toys to fifty-six families, and of course, we included our nursing homes. We did the shop with a cop where we selected thirty children with the help of the school system. We did twenty from Camden, five from Harmony Grove, five from Beard, and we gave those thirty children a gift card for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece to Shop Walmart. I, I, I hope I can read this, this, Senator Chief Nash, you have any questions as far as your crime statistics?
Yes, sir.
Only thing about crime statistics, continue. I was curious, your, your calls for service is going up, and most of the incident categories, most of them are going down a little bit. I add those up in your, uh, I'm gonna say documented incident reports, or six to seven thousand dollar count, but there's almost fifteen thousand calls for service. What is it, the calls?
We take a wide varieties of calls for service, not that are not.
Fully recorded?
That are not reported. I mean, we get calls for service if, oh my gosh, for, for anything.
Yeah, I was, I was kinda guessing. Want the weather to record as well, Mike.
Basically, your calls for service statistic is pretty much every call you get. Our dispatch call center, somebody will call in with a call. It might not be reportable, but we still respond and see what we can do to help.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, sir.
The required number of warrants, is that because of the mayor's successful warrant program?
You know, I, I was gonna mention that, we did have, I think, what was a successful month of amnesty in March. And we, I hope we're gonna try to do that again this year with the help of, of, we couldn't have done that. I give her a lot of props on that. And the mayor, with his idea, we did, there were a large number of people that came in and took advantage of that.
Is that what the number is?
Probably so, yes.
I'll do it in April this year.
April, I'm sorry, that's okay. Last year was in March, now I get to mention it.
Yes, sir.
Oh, just a question about the diversity workshop. Is that ongoing training year to year?
We do, we, we, we have those every year. We have some in-house, and then we do send officers out to get trained so we can do the train the trainer types of workshops. Some of them, some, some of the training classes we attend is mandated, and we, we have to, um, let me look back on the training. As far as, um, the racial profiling, we have to do that by law. That's not a, if we want to or not, we, we do that. And then, of course, the active shooter now is an part of that because of what's happening in the United States. And like I said, I would like to tell the public and the council, we are offering that service to the citizens of Camden. And I wish more people would take advantage of that. There are, um, incidents that are happening in churches, and we will come to your church or your business and, and make a plan of action for active shooters. They, they had a class at the.
Camden Business Incubator.
Camden Business Incubator, and I think it was.
Form is on the roof.
Last week.
Yes, and it was standing room open. We're so happy that the fire marshal did not, uh, feel real foggy that night, huh? Yes, uh, and, and I do wanna say thank you. Captain Boss did a wonderful job, and our public relations, as far as I'm concerned, you know, uh, working with the community and being in the community helps us to get to know each other. So that some of the barriers that some people have, by seeing the police only when something is wrong, we tear some of those barriers down when we do life together, not just when we do this. So we appreciate so much, uh, you know, what you guys do, the pictures of you playing basketball with some of our children and, uh, giving popsicles in the heat, all the things that you're doing is helping us. We, except for, you know, what we're doing right now, before now, we've been doing pretty good, uh, with, in our relationship. And I just think that now is just a little bit of hiccup, we can't do this.
Yes, sir, we will.
As together we do.
Yes, sir.
But I'm, I'm grateful for what you've done, and thank you for your report. Do I have any more questions?
I do have one question. Uh, under, I guess it was a typo, uh, under escorts that once again decreased in two thousand and nineteen with three thousand three hundred and eleven.
Yeah, that was, it's three hundred and eleven.
Okay.
And that is down from last, in two thousand and eighteen, it was three hundred and twenty-eight. We had a surge in, in two thousand and fifteen because we had an anomaly that year and had seven homicides. So our, our escorts were really, really high. But since then, our homicides in Camden are typically either zero or one, so those escorts have started drifting off.